We'll call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, July 2nd. May we have roll call, Jeanette?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Trilson.
Here.
Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven in the council present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions should be played in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and with that, we do have two items that we've added to the agenda. For the mayor, we have the proclamation for Night to Unite, and in the action items, we've got 3.2.1 DuPont settlement for tree damage at Brook Tree Golf Course. With that, Chair, I look for a motion to approve with those additions. I've got two of them here, and I'll take Greg, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. With that, we'll move on to the mayor, and you have two items.
And I'm going to ask for the council's approval to hold off on the reading of the senior game plaque that we received, and see if we can do it at next meeting, and invite the chairs to be possible here, and when we read the plaque, if that's okay.
That sounds great, too.
Okay. The other one is Night to Unite 2013 proclamation. Whereas, the Minnesota Crime Prevention Association, along with AAA of Minnesota, Iowa, and local law enforcement agencies, are sponsoring a statewide program called Night to Unite on August 6, 2013. And whereas, Night to Unite is designed to get to know one another in your neighborhood, build neighborhood involvement by bringing police and communities together, and to bring an awareness to crime prevention and local law enforcement efforts. And whereas, Night to Unite supports the idea that crime prevention is an inexpensive, effective tool in strengthening police and community partnerships. And whereas, Night to Unite provides opportunities to celebrate the ongoing work of law enforcement and neighborhoods in Oatana by working together to fight crime, vandalism, and increase public safety of all citizens. And whereas, the citizens of Oatana play an important role in assisting the Oatana Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violent prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tom Koontz, do hereby call upon all citizens in Oatana to participate in Night to Unite on August 6, 2013. Further, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Thomas Koontz, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2013, Night to Unite in Oatana.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the public hearing for special assessments. I received a comment from Chris that there's some questions left that are not answered yet, and I'm going to ask for this to be tabled until our next meeting, which will be in two weeks.
So will.
We have a motion by Raymond to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been tabled for the next, until the next meeting.
And that may actually have to table until notification. It may not be the next meeting. It's for, so it's not going to go as the next meeting.
Let's state it then as until clarification.
Yes. It'll be tabled until we can address it.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll now move on to financial report, and I'll do a quick recap. $123,235 for Heseltown Construction for pay for Estimate 2 on East Broadway. $72,957 for James Brothers for 12th Avenue Northwest. $22,500 for Oatana Area Chamber of Commerce, second half annual contract. $85,323 for Wentzel Construction for Park Drive Sanitary Sewer Relocation. And $118,754 for other expenses, with the total of $422,770 for total presented to the council. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion. We pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin to pay the bills. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. With that, we move on to the consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license and permits requests, department reports, event permits, and contracts, and all grouped into one motion to simplify our meetings. And with that-
Approved or approved.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on these items? Raymond.
Chris, did Keith get his answer on that liquor thing at the pound? Was there a question he had listed in there about extending liquor out into that alley? And was there a question?
He didn't have a question. I mean, his comments, his comments were on that summary of what he had, and he didn't have. If he had a question, he resolved it.
Yeah.
I thought there was a question about extending liquor out into the alley. Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. We'll move on to action items. Number 3.2.1, DuPont Settlement for Tree Damage at Brook Tree, and we'll start with Chris.
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to City Attorney Mark Wallbrand, who's going to review this settlement agreement.
Thank you.
Recall that in the spring of 2011, some damage to our trees at the Brook Tree Golf Course was noticed after a certain herbicide made by DuPont had been applied. The city notified the DuPont Company of the loss, and the DuPont Company sent out a tree arborist to conduct a survey of the damage that the city had. The, subsequent to that, the DuPont Company made a proposal of settlement to the city with the approximate sum of $640,000. This included replacing some trees, as well as providing treatment for certain trees and other compensation. After we received that proposal, the city, you'll recall, chose to have its own arborist go out and conduct a survey of the damage, mindful also that a year had transpired since the original survey had been conducted. With respect to the new survey conducted by our arborist, Dr. John Lloyd, it was noted that certain trees that hadn't been identified as being affected were affected, and other trees that had been designated for treatment were required to be removed. And so with that, we asked DuPont to send back their arborists to conduct another survey to bring it up to date, and that was performed in November of 2012 and in February of 2013. And about two weeks ago, actually about a little over a week ago, we received the amended proposal from DuPont, and as set out in the memo, it's increased the number of trees for removal. DuPont will remove the trees at its cost. They're going to incur the expense of doing that. And in addition, they're going to pay the city a little less than $1,004,000, or $1,398,940 for the replacement of the 340 trees that needed to be replaced, and an additional $51,000 for tree maintenance, and an additional $141,183 to purchase tree care for the trees remaining on the property. The city's provided a limited warranty for damage to trees caused by imprenas, and an additional $267,000 will be provided to the city for compensation. The total is $1,858,293.33. The benefits of the settlement are that it avoids the uncertainties, burdens, risks, and delays inherent to litigation, and assures that the benefits that I've outlined above are obtained for the city. At the same time, as DuPont set up, actually, there are two resolution plans ongoing here. This is the DuPont's Claims Resolution Program. They also, also at the same time, there was a class action instituted that's venueed in the state of Pennsylvania. It's a multi-state federal court lawsuit. The relief that the city is being provided under the Claims Resolution Agreement that we have in front of us is very similar to the relief that's in the proposed class action settlement, almost down the line. The class action settlement may have a warranty that extends longer than the warranty provided in the cities, and in that instance, if the class action settlement is approved in September, then the city will also get the benefit of the longer warranty. But there's no regression on what we have offered to us now. So with that, and having reviewed it with Rick, and Rick is a wonderful asset for the city, he did a great job assembling our loss, and along with the help of John Lloyd, he's a PhD in trees, we were able to, I think, get a proper assessment. Visiting with Rick and Chris, we've determined that the counts of trees, the counts of damaged trees are the same between what we had calculated and what DuPont finally came to. And so, in that measure, it appears that we're receiving, you know, adequate compensation for the loss that we've incurred.
Well, thank you very much. And for you, Chris, everyone, Rick, thank you for the work you've done on that, because that's substantially different than what the initial one was. And Raymond.
Just got a question. I visited with Rick today. That does not include also DuPont's going to take them out? That's besides that 1.8?
Yeah, the DuPont will take all the trees out. They'll contract that all out, and there's no cost to the city on that.
But that's besides the 1.8.
That's besides the 1.8.
Yeah. That's a lot of money, too. I mean, if you added that. Do we have any expenses of second opinion, or do we have any expenses on the project? Do we have any spending? Do we get a second opinion? Do we have any expenses towards that?
Yeah, there was a, we incurred about $15,000 expense there.
But that, the money does not include DuPont taking them out, which is a lot of money.
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions from the council?
I guess I'd just like to thank Rick. He really worked a lot of hours on this, and through his expertise, his passion for the golf course, we were able to, and Mark got a settlement of 1.2 million more than what they'd first come up with, and that's not an easy thing to do. It was the right thing to do. And thank you very much.
I do want to thank everyone that did work on it, because it was a team effort within the city here. Raymond.
Mark, what is the total dollar of that class action suit? What's the total dollars?
I don't know.
Okay. It's got to be in the billions or something.
I don't know. I don't know if that's been determined yet, because I think what the class action is providing a formula for paying the losses. And so, but I can't give you the total dollar amount, because I don't know.
With that, Chair is looking for a motion. Move or approve. A motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion?
Yes. I would just like to encourage, you know, 1.8 million is a lot of dollars. So I'd like to have them come back to the council with a plan of how that's going to be distributed back out.
Within their department, right?
Within.
Okay.
Yeah. We've already formed a committee, Tom, on that, and so we are working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Will the money come shortly, Mark, with this approval, or without a time period?
That was the second question that Chris and Rick asked me. And I called the attorney for DuPont and spoke with her again yesterday morning, and she said about a month. And, but she also said I could check in with her in three weeks. But it's a big, complicated lawsuit, and it took a while for the, well, we keep reminding ourselves that our survey wasn't done until February of 2013. We got the proposed settlement offer again in June, which isn't bad in the world of claims. But there are different layers to go through. But I told her I was coming to visit with you about it tonight, and that would be the question that would be asked. And I said, can I say about a month? And she said yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Having seen no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And again, thank you for doing this. It was, it's a nice reward, well, not a reward, but a nice compensation for what we're, what happened. And with that, we'll move on to Resolutions 3.41, 66-13, Potashik Land Donation, and that will go to Kyle.
Good evening. A little over a year ago, the city was approached with a property donation from Ramona Potashik at 1004 LeMond Road. I handed out a rather crude map. The property didn't highlight well, so I circled it. But this property is located adjacent to LeMond Road and our sanitary sewer lift station, where the road washed out in 2010. The staff feels that it would be an advantageous piece of property for us to have. It's in a floodplain. We have improved the channel there with riprap, and this would allow us better access to that channel for future. So we recommend approval of the, or acceptance of the donation of the land. The only budget impact would be the annual maintenance on the property.
Mowing of the property?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the council? Raymond.
Kyle, when you say mowing, is that, is that a couple-hour job? Or, I mean, do you know?
I, no, it's a rather small lot. I would guess less than an hour at the time. And it's near Leo Rudolph's, so.
Any other questions?
Moved or approved.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. And to Ms. Potashik, thank you very much for this. It will help us get in and out of there easier. So, in that, we move on to 3.42, 67-13, Charitable Gambling Permit for Oatana Youth Hockey at Reno's Bar. And that will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. What we're looking for here is council approval of Resolution 67-13 to allow Oatana Youth Hockey Association to conduct some lawful gambling at Reno's Bar. Reno's has just reopened after being closed for about a year. The youth hockey association previously offered lawful gambling, pulled tabs at the site, and would like to offer them again. The premise permit application lease for lawful gambling activity will be filed with the state, and copies of those documents have been provided to you. This would be the third site for the Oatana Youth Hockey Association. That is the maximum number of sites permissible at one time within the city, as per our city code. The budget impact, there's no additional revenue. Each organization pays an annual fee of $500 for a gambling permit, and that allows the organization to operate one, two, or three sites. So they meet all the requirements, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council?
Completely approved.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion?
Chris, do they have to report their gambling results to the state every year?
Yes. Yes. And they're, and I think we talked about this before, too. Our code requires them to spend at least 80% of the funds within Steel County.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. On to ordinances. We've got 3.51, Second Reading of Proposed Ordinance 11-13, Food Vendor on Public Streets. And there we go to Troy. And Troy is-
Oh, no, I'm taking that for Troy.
Okay.
What we're asking, council, this is the second reading of the proposed ordinance, which details the regulations for, required for food vending on public streets. Our current code is vague on the regulation and the licenses required for vendors vending food on the public streets and the right-of-way areas. We held a study session back in May, May 22, to discuss this. This first reading was approved on June 18, council meeting. This amendment adds 496, the food vending on public streets, to our ordinance code. Staff would recommend approval of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Chris. Now, there are no changes from the first reading to the second-
Correct. There are no changes.
Thank you. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve ordinance 11-13.
We have a motion by Brent to approve the ordinance 11-13.
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. And this being ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
I've got a question. Has there been any public, since the first reading, have we heard anything from?
I have not received any comments. Have you?
Have we heard any?
No. Okay, we've got Dodson, we've got Schultz, Burbank.
I didn't vote yet.
You didn't vote yet?
No.
Go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trilson.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. All approved. That has been a, second reading, that is done now, so we, now becomes an ordinance. Next one is 3.52, Second Reading of Proposed Ordinance 13-13, Food Vending Vehicles Within the B3 Central Business District, and we'll go back to Chris.
Thank you. This would be approval for the ordinance amending the food vending vehicles within the B3 Central Business District. This was also, had a first reading. This simply addresses permitting private landowners within the B3 zoning district to allow for a food vending vehicle to locate on private property with a conditional use permit. This would allow for a higher level of public review, as well as the ability to place any reasonable conditions on the proposal. That may relate to hours, noise, parking, well, as any other potential issues that might need to be mitigated. So there's been no changes to this ordinance amendment, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. And with that, any questions from the council? Chair is looking for a motion.
So will.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Again, being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trilson.
Aye.
Abraham.
Aye. And now we move on to 3.53, Second Reading for Proposed Ordinance 12-13, which is change in sewer rates, and we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. As you'll remember from the last meeting, this is updating the sewer ordinance pertaining to the rates charged for the fixed rate of the sanitary sewer service. The rates have not been increased since 2004, and an adjustment is necessary to both cover operating losses and to make a larger investment in maintaining the sewer system. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 12-13.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
Les.
Yes.
The only comment I would make, you may well have heard from some residents, that they're a little unhappy about the all-in-one increase in one shot. I am as well, but the fact that remains that Kyle's relatively known in his position. This is an issue that he had to take up and kind of figure out from the start. So I can't, we can't hold it against Kyle, that we have to do this all in one shot. But it is something we do need to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Raymond.
I felt we should advertise it over three years, and it's just, I think it's a lot of hardship and a lot of people doing it all at once, so I'm going to be voting aye again, so.
Okay. Thank you. With that, any further discussion? Kevin.
I guess I, I understand Ray's, Ray's feelings on that. I agree with Nate. With what we've got coming down the road in regards to the wastewater treatment plant, it's important that we start saving money now, so that when, when that comes to fruition, we've got the money there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, I agree with everybody here. I don't, I don't like doing it. I think it's necessary we have to, but I think it's a good lesson for us to keep an eye on things and not get caught in these types of situations.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
Well, the utilities look at rates every year, and, you know, I just felt that's a long time to even look at them. I mean, we should have, every year, we should look at something like that, and it's important to the public that we get on it instead of waiting that long, so.
Well, that's good hindsight.
Well.
Kyle, you're on top of it now, right?
Yep. Okay. We need a motion?
Moved or approved.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussions? Again, with that being a ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Trilson.
Nay.
Abraham.
Aye. This has been approved, and this is, again, also the second reading, so that is now to go into effect. And with that, we move on to, we don't have miscellaneous, no reports, so we'll go to public comment. And if anyone wishes to speak, please come to the microphone, sign in, and I ask you to limit it to two minutes, items that are not on the agenda at this point.
Roger Mosick, and I originally didn't have anything to speak, but of course, when I look at some of the paperwork that we got for the meeting, I was prompted. I think it was Ray Trilson at last meeting had talked about the financial hardship. It'll be a financial hardship with the sanitary sewer increase. You know, I can understand that. But what, what kind of irritates me is, is we're looking at necessary increases, and I see a lot of unnecessary things that we do, just as a matter of course. I'm looking at this property along the LeMond Road. Essentially, it's going to be grass water that way, hopefully. But budget impact, annual cost to mow. Why, at every square inch we add to city property, we have to mow, and probably fertilize and herbicide, too. I mean, we're talking expensive. Besides that, a grass water, it should be mowed, because all we're doing is flushing the grass clippings into the river, which is no, no. But anyway, just wanted to bring that up, and I, part of what gets me thinking about the same thing is my oldest daughter gave me a book that I read years and years ago, 2003, called The Party Is Over, and it deals with this type of mentality, is, is we look at things, we just do as a matter of course, don't even think about it. And, you know, there's a minor budget impact, but there's an impact. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anyone else? With that, we'll move on to council comments, and we will start with Nate.
Have a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Greg?
So I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and be safe, and take a few minutes to reflect on the courage and foresight of our forefathers that allowed us the privilege to be here right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. David?
I think Councilmember Schultz said it all and said it well, so I agree with that.
Thank you. Kevin?
I would agree with Mr. Schultz.
Brent?
I would agree with Mr. Schultz.
Raymond?
Just a comment on the Fourth of July fireworks. I know last year, there was some problems with people shooting off fireworks at the ball diamonds, and it wasn't very safe for a lot of people. I encourage the people in town to take a safe act, and not let that happen again, because it was, that's not a good situation for us as a good community to have a good Fourth of July, and thank the people for putting that on every year, because I've heard nothing but good comments coming from the people that live here. So have a nice, safe Fourth.
Thank you, Raymond. Chris?
Yes, I have a couple of things, just to let you know about, obviously, the Fourth of July holiday. City offices will be closed. We have some great things coming up. We have the Oatana Weekend Out on Friday, July 12. We're going to have the movie in the park that's free. The movie being shown is called Zookeeper. We're going to have a rad zoo presentation. Movies start at 9:00. On Saturday, it's Fishing Day Out at Lake Chase from 11:00 to 3:00. Also going on in Kaplan's Woods from 3:00 to 5:00 is geocaching. Park and Wrecking Cabela's will be supplying us some GPS units. That's a lot of fun. And then on Sunday, there'll be Discount Admission at River Springs Water Park. $2 for anyone from noon to 8:00 PM. Let's see. And then, of course, looking ahead to Saturday, July 13, there is a Freedom Walk for Northridge Church. Also, the Humane Society, we're going to, are having their spay and neuter clinic, and the historical, Steel County Historical Extravaganza, and chuck wagon supper is Saturday and Sunday on July 13 and 14. So that, and then I would also want to call on Kyle- So that, and then I would also want to call on Kyle to give us a project update on our street projects.
Thank you. Kyle.
Good evening. We're busy in the field right now. East Broadway, they poured curb yesterday, and we're working on driveway aprons today, so that project's nearing completion. 12th Avenue Northwest, the contractor has done all their removals, and they're working on storm sewer. They've been doing a real good job of maintaining access to the businesses. It's something that we've been watching pretty close. On the 2013 Utility and Street Project, the pavement has been removed on Mackinac, 14th and 15th, between Truman and Lincoln, with the underground construction starting on Mackinac. So that one's moving along. Park Drive, the work associated with the Vierricon expansion is wrapping up, and the Northwest Industrial Park Pond on the intersection of 24th Avenue and Park Drive is going full force, so there's trucks rolling in and out of there all day. But everything's going well. The weather's finally cooperating.
Finally cooperating, yes.
Got a question.
Kevin.
Any idea when the deconstruction of the Hardee's Budget Mart location will begin?
I haven't heard.
I know our Community Development Director has been in, in contact with them. I think they were having some issues regarding the, the deeds and whatnot, so they're, they're working on it. They had some...
Seems to be a question that I get asked every day.
I know, I know.
And with that, I think that I would like to have everyone please come back safely after your holidays. Enjoy them as much as you can, but come back safely.[1784.61]